I'd like to welcome everyone to the September 19th, 2023 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
I want to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance to the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the commissioners at our meeting tonight. Also want to announce that any members of the public who used public transportation or the county's parking deck to attend the meeting tonight can get validation for your parking from one of the officers who's with us this evening. You can see them on your way out or for bus passes. All right, we come to the consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Do any members of the public have any questions about any items on our consent agenda? We do need to... Did we need to add something to the agenda? Oprow? There was nothing. Okay. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. So we now come to public comment. And we have a list of folks that have signed up who wish to speak during public comment. So I'm going to go through the list. But if there's anyone who wishes to speak during public comment who did not sign up, there'll be a chance to do that once we go through the list. Everyone's got three minutes to speak to the Board during public comment. You'll get an orange light when you've got about 30 seconds left and a red light when your time's up. And we do ask that you discontinue your comments once your time's up because we want everyone to have the same amount of time. All right, the first person on our list is Rachel Bliss.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm going to read the Declaration of Peace and Nonviolence for 2023 in Western North Carolina. And after I finish my three minutes, a fellow member will come and finish the document. We, the undersigned proponents of peace, living on ancient Cherokee lands and working for a world free of the ravages of war, hereby declare our observance of the International Day of Peace and the International Day of Nonviolence on Thursday, September 21st and Saturday, September 23rd, 2023, in Western North Carolina. Both days were instituted by the United Nations. The Day of Peace became an annual event in 1981. The Day of Nonviolence, which falls on Mahatma Gandhi's October 2nd birthday, was added to the UN calendar in 2007. Now, in our 14th year of celebrating Peace Day in Western North Carolina, this year we add the goal of nonviolence as well. We recognize that the weapons of war are the major contributors to climate devastation while profiting from the destruction of life on Earth. Thus, the potential use of nuclear weapons can lead to the end of civilization itself. Therefore, we must turn away from this culture of violence and focus our resources on empowering this society free of violence and endless war. Active nonviolence involves diplomacy, compromise, and the right sharing of planetary resources. This requires creative persistence every day of our lives. Thus, we have set aside these two days to imagine a peaceful world where we celebrate our diversity and resolve our conflicts in nonviolent ways. As Gandhi himself reminds us, "An eye for an eye makes a whole world blind." Thus, realizing that endless wars are not the path to a lasting peace or to a sustainable future, we call on all people to participate with us in two days of action. Thursday, September 21, Walk for Peace. Meet at the corner of Haywood Road and Louisiana Avenue in West Asheville at 5:30 PM to publicly demonstrate our commitment to the ongoing work for a just and peaceful, nonviolent world. On Saturday, September 23rd, gather at Land of Sky UCC 15 Over Brook Place, Asheville, 2:00 to 4:00 PM for announcements on our 2023 Peacemakers of the Year and new peace honorees, as well as celebrating the continuing efforts of promoting peace and nonviolence
Please stop.
locally and around the world. Thank you.
Susan Oler.
And I'm going to finish the declaration. Join us as we unite our hearts and voices to imagine a world free of war and to celebrate the possibilities of true peace and disarmament. As Jeremy Gilley, creator of International Day of Peace, says, "We all want a world without war, without conflict, without human suffering." Endorsing groups are Asheville Coalition for Palestinian Rights, Asheville Friends Meeting, Beloved Asheville, Catholic Committee of Appalachia, NC Chapter, Community Accounting Asheville LLC, Creative Peacemakers, Dances of Universal Peace, Elder and Sage Community Gardens, Ethical Humanist Society of Asheville Board, French Broad Food Co-op, Friends Committee on National Legislation Advocacy Team of Western North Carolina, Healing Love Institute, Healthcare for All WNC, Just Peace for Israel-Palestine, Land of the Sky UCC Church, North Carolina Coalition for Alternatives to the Death Penalty, North Carolina Peace Action, NC Physicians for Social Responsibility, Reverend Dr. Adet Fulbright Folsen and Reverend Claudette Jimmison of the UU Congregation of Asheville, Veterans for Peace WNC, Mama and Papa Bear's Peace Garden, Peace Day Asheville, Peace is Possible NC, Racial Justice Coalition of Asheville Incorporated, Rainbow Community School, Reject Raytheon Asheville, Sierra Peace Choir, St. Eugene's Catholic Church, Senior Suffragette, The Story Shepherds Project, WNC CP USA, and WNC for Peace. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Nina Tovish.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Nina Tovish. I'm here in my capacity as a resident of Buncombe County and as president of Sustain AVL, whose goal is a healthy economy for a thriving community. Were I lucky enough to win one of the very large lottery jackpots that are on offer this week, I would plan to invest a significant portion of my winnings in scientific efforts to generate better packaging options for commerce and for consumers. We're drowning in disposable, non-biodegradable plastics in virtually everything we buy and consume. I have to believe there's a better way and that eventually materials, technology will catch up to this problem. But in the meantime, plastic is ubiquitous, and as you know, particularly, single-use plastic is a big problem. I came here this evening to urge you to forge ahead on your single-use plastics initiative. I think it's a wonderful way to lead for our community and for our region. I also, just 10 minutes ago, got informed that apparently there's a line item in the Assembly budget that makes it impossible for counties to pass regulations on this matter. I'm appalled if that's the case, and I sincerely hope that does not survive the process. But if it does, then it's time to get creative. And rather than sanctioning the use of single-use plastics, perhaps as a county and as a municipality here in Asheville, we can find ways to incentivize the nonuse of those materials for restaurants and other commercial enterprises. I think we're clever enough to figure out a way to do that that's financially responsible and will encourage local businesses to get on board. Thank you for persisting with this. Maybe it needs to go to a court case, not a lawyer here, but I appreciate your attention, your ongoing attention to this matter. Thank you.
Thanks, Nina. DeeDee Stiles.
My name is DeeDee Stiles, and I live in Swananoa. The mountains that surround us in Buncombe County are ancient. For hundreds of thousands of years, they have moderated the flow of streams, creeks, and rivers by letting rainwater and snow soak in and then discharging it at a fairly steady rate into the streams and creeks. This system only works as long as the mountains are able to absorb most of the rain that falls. By allowing our steep slopes to be compromised by too much impervious surface like houses, roads, and driveways, we are destroying a system that has worked for eons. A case in point, according to the local news, back in August, the residents in South Buncombe were under a conserve water order. Apparently, the level of the Mills River, where Asheville gets the water to serve its South Buncombe area water customers, the level had gotten so low that there was no longer adequate water for those customers. It is not just in times of heavy or extended rainfall that excess runoff is a problem. It's a problem every time it rains, and water that should be soaking into the mountains is running off of houses and roads on steep slopes and away down the creeks, and so is not available during dry times to keep the creeks and rivers up. You must figure out how, or even if, steep slopes can be developed and still allow the ancient system that moderates the flow of water in our creeks and streams to continue to work like it has ever since long before humans showed up here. Every day, the earth movers are working, the contractors are building, the pavers are laying blacktop on those steep slopes. When it rains, the water is leaving faster and faster. You must make sure new developments are much better at letting the rain soak into the mountains. You must require retrofitting of those developments already built so much less water is lost to runoff. And you should declare a moratorium on steep slope development until the planning department figures out how to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynda Tatzipa.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Lynda Tatzipa. I live in Black Mountain, and I'm coming to you as a member of the Plastics Free WNC. I did come here to ask you, to urge you, to pass an ordinance banning single-use plastics and styrofoam. And as was already said, we just learned that there may be a roadblock to that. In light of that, I would ask you to do what you can, pass this ordinance if we can possibly get this language removed from the budget. If not, you may be able to pass a resolution standing up to the General Assembly. This is not okay for them to remove local authority to manage waste, and we need to let them know we're not okay with that. We'll be doing that as well, from the ground, from the grassroots. We all know already that plastics are a major health and environmental issue. We already know, hopefully you've heard from us, that we're consuming a credit card-sized amount of plastic every week. We know this is something easy that we can do, that we can ban this single-use plastic, we can remove this from our community, and it's an easy step that we can do to help our environment. It's not the only thing, but it's something we can do now. I urge you again, do what you can in light of what happens with the budget. We'll be there with you, but if possible, we need this ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks, Lynda. Judy Max.
Hi there, and thank you, Commissioners. It's a real pleasure to see each and every one of you. It's been a while since I've seen you, so hi. I am chair of our local Sierra Club, and I'm representing and speaking for over 9,000 members and supporters of Sierra Club members here in the county. So we're all cheering for you, and I'm asking you to indeed, please do, go ahead and pass this ordinance to ban single-use plastics, the carryout bag, and also the carryout styrofoam and cups, the containers. And I want to give you some numbers. So, number one, sampling has shown that microplastics in water samples, 100% of the water samples in the French Broad River, surprise, surprise, are polluted with microplastic, 100%. Number two, it is estimated that we use 132 million single-use plastic bags in our county every year. There was just a really cute, and you'll see the mermaid right here very shortly, to show that 365 bags are used by each of us, oh my gosh, every year. Kirby, our local recycling processor, must hire additional staff and spends $10,000 a month taking plastic bags to the landfill. They cause huge problems in the recycling process and landfills. Scary numbers for the future. Plastics production is expected to increase 40% in the next 10 years, 40% of what we've got now. And recycling is not the answer. Less than 5% of plastic bags are recycled, and this number is dropping. So, we urge you to please go ahead and pass an ordinance, and we will fight with you to ban plastic bags at the checkout counter and the styrofoam takeout counters and cups. So, great to talk to you guys.
Thanks, Judy. Annie Johnson.
Good evening. I am Ani Johnson, and I am a senior at Asheville High School. A few of my classmates and I have gathered over 400 petitions in agreement across Buncombe County to support the plastic bag and styrofoam container ban. Like many of my peers, I am a passionate lover of the outdoors and a hopeful member of our community's future. Our future is being contaminated by plastics, as you all know, which primarily consists of the use of single-use plastics. Studies have shown that Buncombe County residents use approximately 132.4 million plastic shopping bags annually. Of these, the average plastic bag is used for a simple 15 minutes and then is thrown to waste to become a pollutant. Over time, these plastic bags break down into microplastics and leach into the waterways and end up in our ecosystems, air, and in our bodies. Studies show that we consume and breathe a credit card's worth of microplastics every week, and that number is just growing. This is not only an environmental issue, but it's a socioeconomic, public health, and air quality issue. The movement isn't just going to find a buncombe county. Currently, there are eight states that have statewide bans on the use of single-use plastic bags. For the sake of our future, please take action. I know that there are barriers, as we've talked about earlier, but please, for the sake of our future, take action to stop this. Our future doesn't have the time to wait. Thank you.
Thanks, Ani. Ken Braim.
I'm Ken Braim. I live in Lester, and I'm speaking on behalf of the WNC, the Plastic Free WNC, and the Sierra Club. But again, want to thank you guys for all the time you've spent studying this issue, meeting with us to be educated. And again, I would urge you, if at all possible, to pass this resolution and take action. But if that's not possible because of the legislature, then we would encourage you to look at other alternatives. What can we do? What can you do to encourage voluntary compliance among our local businesses? And what can you do to help encourage our local citizens to bring their own bag or to ask for paper instead of plastic? You know, we need to take action. If we're limited with what we can do with an ordinance, then let's find other creative ways to accomplish as much as we can to do that. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ken. Maureen Lineman.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Maureen Lineman, and I am here to speak for the Green Grannies and for all the children and grandchildren of our community. Their health is at risk from plastic pollution in their very environments. Commissioners, I call upon each of you to be leaders and to vote for the local ban, to show the legislature the will of the people to protect our children, and also to be leaders in turning the hearts of our state representatives, to vote for our children, their health, and to ban plastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Lila Goodwin.
Hi, everybody. I'm Lila. I'm 15 years old, and I'm a sophomore at Asheville High. I don't see very many young people here today, but I am kind of here to represent them because I wish I did see them here. Because I believe we are part of all of this and that we also need to speak up for what we believe in. And I think I can speak for all of us when we say that generations before mine, government at every level has failed to regulate corporations or pass legislation to make real change to protect our natural resources. And we can stop it right now. Buncombe County has the chance to slow the culture of convenience. We can take this step forward to improve our environment. We can set an example as a community by expressing who we are and who we want to be. We can create like-mindedness for the tourists and visitors of Buncombe County. We are done with the excuses, and we are here to make a change.
Thanks, Lila. Cindy Dwyer.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Cindy Dwyer. I live in Asheville, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on the important issue of the proposed ordinance banning plastic bags and all these styrofoam containers. This problem is well researched, well documented by credible sources. There's no question about the problem it's causing. And the Florida Legislature has preempted local governments from enacting bans such as this, and it sounds like the same thing is cooking up here in North Carolina. One of the cities in Florida was able to adopt their ordinance prior to the bill being finalized, so perhaps it could be done here. But it's painfully obvious that going on vacation and breaking your wrist is a very bad idea. I don't recommend this at all. On the other hand, this is a great idea, and I highly recommend it and encourage you to please adopt this ordinance. It's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Alsbrook?
Good evening, Commissioners. Again, thank you so much for the time and energy y'all have all put into this issue. It's been a fun learning experience working this out with you all. I'll echo everything all my friends have said before me. We've done the work, we've done the community outreach. It's the right thing to do. This is a bit of a David and Goliath situation at the moment, and I don't know about y'all, but I really like to root for the spunky underdog. So whatever creative ways we can do to really take a stand on plastics as an issue, I really encourage us to move that forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Anna. Sarah Ogletree.
Hi, everyone. Anna, thank you for the David and Goliath analogy. My name is Sarah Ogletree. I direct the Creation Care Alliance, and we're a network of congregations and faith communities here in Buncombe County and also throughout our Western North Carolina region. I'm here because our communities have been organizing alongside some of you, alongside people in this room, to pass this ban because it's how we can love our neighbors. It's one of the ways we can love our neighbors. We can't love our neighbors well without loving the air they breathe and the water they drink and the ground that our food is grown in. So we were really excited to come tonight and see this move forward, and we're frustrated by this roadblock that we're seeing from the state. But I do want to say, like many of my colleagues have said tonight, that we're excited and faithful about the ability for creative action and the ways that we can still take action on this regardless of what roadblocks we might encounter. So I do urge you to stand in solidarity with us in naming that the state shouldn't limit our ability to care for creation and each other in this way. And I also encourage you to continue to lead in the ways that you're leading and take bold steps as we figure out what we can do regardless of these roadblocks. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sarah Ray? I'm sorry. Yep.
Hello. My name is Sarah Ray, and when I am not the French Broad Mermaid, as I am today, I am an artist and a tour guide. I give walking tours of Asheville, and I tell people about this plastic bag ban that we want here in Buncombe County. And so many of my guests are telling me that those same kinds of bans are working for them in their communities all over the country and even in the world. I have lived in this place my whole life, and I love sharing it with other people. I love my job as a tour guide so much. But when there are plastic bags caught in the trees and blowing through the streets and stuck on the banks of the French Broad River, it's embarrassing, but it's also sad and it's frightening, right? That so many of our treasured plants and animals and even ourselves are unwittingly consuming plastics just by drinking water and breathing air. So we're just asking you today to please pass this ordinance to ban the single-use plastics. Please stand up to the General Assembly. Let's get this done, most importantly, for our health, but also as a point of pride. I want to show off a plastic-free WNC. Thank you.
Thank you. Karim Olachea.
Hi, I'm Karim Olachea. I'm with Mountain True, and I want to start off just thanking you for considering action to reduce plastic pollution. Many of you have opened your doors to us in the last few months, years, and we sat down in these conversations. and these conversations have been fruitful and had made me, until today, very optimistic. Plastics is a documented threat to our environment and to public health, and we believe that the North Carolina Solid Waste Management Act gives you the authority to take action. In fact, we believe the law is so clear, so clearly on your side, that it appears to be that the General Assembly has snuck in language into the proposed budget to strip you of that power. It's a cynical and shameful ploy to deny you the ability to serve your constituents. It's anti-democratic, and I look forward to working together to resist and reject this encroachment on our rights to protect our health and the health of our mountains, rivers, and streams. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and the last person that signed up is Drew Ball.
Hi, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Drew Ball. I work for the Natural Resources Defense Council. I'll first note there is a packed overflow room downstairs with lots of young people here for this issue. And I'll also note that a language referred to earlier that would block local governments' action on this issue showed up late last night in a leaked draft General Assembly budget. It was placed there through backroom deals by special interest groups. It is not law. It will hopefully never become law, and that type of politics is the antithesis of the open process that you all have followed, and we appreciate all the work you've done. I'm on the board of the North Carolina Sierra Club, and as a former staff of the North Carolina Sierra Club, in 2010, I worked with then-Senator Josh Stein to pass the plastic bag ban on the Outer Banks. That bill started as a statewide bill, and during the legislative process was narrowed to focus instead only on the Outer Banks as an initial step. It was well-received and popular, being supported by many, including the Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce. In 2015, special interests like the Retail Merchants Association and fossil fuel groups who stood only to profit at the expense of our waterways and public health, our overflowing landfills and recycling centers convinced the General Assembly to overturn that bag ban based solely on the fact that it was passed as a statewide bill, not a local bill, which by process and by process alone makes it unconstitutional. They did not block it because local governments don't have the authority, because you do. Thanks to statutes like the Solid Waste Management Act, you have the power. Duke School of Law, Southern Environmental Law Center have written about this, and when they repealed that law, we fell from being a leader in the Southeast to a laggard. Over four hundred municipalities across the country, including many in the South, like Charleston, have common sense bag bans. We need municipal leaders like yourselves to take the lead. When this body passed the 100% clean energy target, who would have guessed that we'd now have a statewide 100% energy target? And that's thanks to your leadership, and we need that leadership right now. So again, this is wildly popular. Eighty percent of the nearly 4,000 residents that responded to Asheville's public survey were supportive, and we've seen widespread support among the many businesses our coalition has surveyed on this initiative. So again, we appreciate all your work. We applaud you. Please continue to show leadership and move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Drew. All right, that's everyone who signed up, but we will also allow anyone else to speak to the board during public comment if they wish. So are there others who would like to speak or make a comment? Okay, all right. Well, thanks, everyone, for taking time to come out this evening. We really appreciate it. We appreciate all the work that you all do for important issues facing our community. Thanks for being here. Okay, Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is a presentation recognizing Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month, and Commissioner Jasmine Beach-Ferrara and some other folks are going to help us out with this.
Great. We're honored to make this proclamation recognizing National Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month, and Rosio will read first in Spanish, and then I will follow in English, and then there will be remarks from community leaders following that. Thank you. Esta es la proclamación del condado de Buncombe por el mes de la herencia hispana y latina. Considerando que el mes nacional de la herencia hispana y latina, conocido como mes de la herencia hispana, celebra a la comunidad hispana y latina y destaca sus innumerables logros. Y considerando que la observancia comenzó en 1968 como la semana de la herencia hispana bajo la presidencia de Lyndon B. Johnson, y fue promulgada ley federal el 17 de agosto de 1988, mediante la cual se llamaba a todas las personas de los Estados Unidos a comemorar esta semana con ceremonias, actividades y programas. Y considerando que muchos latinoamericanos remontan sus raíces a las culturas de los pueblos indígenas de las Americas, como los arahuacos, los yañu, los aztecas, los incas, los mayas, y los tainos, mientras que algunos también a los exploradores españoles o a los africanos que fueron traídos como esclavos al Nuevo Mundo. Y considerando que los latinos son personas descendientes de países latinoamericanos y pueden hablar una variedad de idiomas diferentes. Los hispanos son individuos que hablan español y son descendientes de países de habla hispana, incluyendo España. Y considerando que el 15 de septiembre es significativo como fecha de inicio para el mes de la herencia latina porque es el aniversario de la independencia de los países latinoamericanos de Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. Además, México y Chile celebran su independencia el 16 y 18 de septiembre, respectivamente. Y considerando que del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre se reconoce como el mes nacional de la herencia hispana y latina, que es un momento para honrar las invaluable formas en que la comunidad hispana y latina contribuyen a nuestras metas comunes. Celebrar sus diversas culturas y trabajar por una sociedad más fuerte, más inclusiva, y próspera para todos. Y considerando que los hispanos y latinos han servido y continúan sirviendo como líderes de derechos civiles, educadores, servidores públicos, dueños de negocios, activistas, artistas, colegas, amigos, y mucho más en nuestra comunidad y en todo el mundo. Y sus valores: servicio a los demás, no violencia, aceptación de todas las personas, respeto por la vida y el medio ambiente, y celebración de la comunidad también son valores de Estados Unidos. Y considerando que los hispanos y latinoamericanos representan un grupo demográfico importante y de rápido crecimiento en el condado de Buncombe, honramos las invaluable formas en que contribuyen a nuestra gran comunidad, no solo este mes, pero durante todo el año. Y ahora, por lo tanto, proclamece del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre de 2023 el mes nacional de herencia hispana y latina en el condado de Buncombe, e invitése a nuestra comunidad a unirse a nosotros para celebrar las grandes contribuciones de los estadounidenses de origen hispano y latino a nuestro condado, estado, y nación.
National Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. Whereas National Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month, known as Mes de la Herencia Hispana, celebrates the Hispanic and Latino community and highlights its countless achievements. And whereas the observation began in 1968 as Hispanics Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson, and was enacted into federal law on August 17, 1998, calling upon all the people of the United States to observe this time with ceremonies, activities, and programs. And whereas many Latin Americans traced their roots to the cultures of the indigenous peoples of the Americas, including the Arahuacs, the Hinua, the Aztecs, the Incas, the Maya, and the Taños, and some traced their roots to the Spanish explorers or to the Africans who were brought as slaves to the New World. And whereas Latinos are individuals who are descendants from Latin American countries and may speak a variety of different languages, and Hispanics are individuals who speak Spanish and are descendants from Spanish-speaking countries, including Spain. And whereas September 15 is significant as a starting date for Latino Heritage Month because it is the anniversary of independence for the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, while Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence on September 16 and September 18, respectively. And whereas September 15 to October 15 is recognized as National Hispanic Heritage Month, which is a time to honor the invaluable ways Hispanics and Latinos contribute to our common goals, celebrate their diverse cultures, and work toward a stronger, more inclusive, and more prosperous society for all. And whereas Hispanics and Latinos have and continue to serve as civil rights leaders, educators, public servants, business owners, activists, artists, colleagues, friends, and much more in our community and across the world, and their values, service to others, nonviolence, acceptance of all people, respect for life and the environment, and celebrating community are also America's values. And whereas Hispanic and Latin Americans represent a significant and fast-growing demographic of Buncombe County, and we honor the invaluable ways they contribute to our great community, not just during this month, but all year long. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that September 15 to October 15, 2023, is National Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month in Buncombe County, and let us encourage our community to join us in celebrating the great contributions of Hispanic and Latin Americans to our county, state, and nation. Signed by Brownie Newman, Chairman of Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
La herencia hispana. En el mes de la herencia hispana, reflexionamos sobre la riqueza y la diversidad de las culturas que enriquecen esta nación. Recordamos que Estados Unidos es una fusión de tradiciones, idiomas, y experiencias, y que nuestras raíces hispanas desempeñan un papel fundamental en esta mezcla. Nos recuerda que esta es una nación de inmigrantes, todos con historias únicas que contar y contribuciones valiosas que hacer. Celebramos la pasión, la perseverancia, y la resiliencia de la comunidad hispana, que ha dejado una huella imborrable en la música, el arte, la ciencia, la política, y la agricultura, y en todos los aspectos de la vida estadounidense. Es un recordatorio de que a pesar de nuestras diferencias, compartimos un futuro común y una responsabilidad mutua de construir una sociedad más justa y equitativa para todos. En este mes de la herencia hispana, honramos nuestras raíces y celebramos el poder de la diversidad para unirnos y fortalecernos como nación. Sigamos trabajando juntos en construir un Estados Unidos más inclusivo, donde todas las voces sean escuchadas y todas las culturas sean valoradas. La herencia hispana es parte de la rica tela de esta nación, y juntos dejamos un futuro brillante y prometedor. Feliz mes de la herencia hispana, de parte de CIMA, compañeros inmigrantes de las montañas en acción.
I will interpret the words that our compañero Ernesto just mentioned. So in this month of Hispanic heritage, we want to reflect upon the richness and diversity of cultures that enrich this nation. Let's remember that the U.S. is a fusion of traditions, languages, and experiences, and that our Latin American roots also do a fundamental place to do this fusion. Let us remember that this nation was built upon immigrants, which they share unique histories and that their contributions are all valuable. We would like to celebrate passion, perseverance, and resilience from our Hispanic community that has left an imprint in music, art, science, politics, agriculture, and all aspects of the American life. Let us remember too that although we have differences, we also share a common future and a mutual responsibility to build a society that is more fair and equitable for everybody. In this Hispanic Heritage Month, we would like to honor our Latin American roots, and we would like to celebrate the power of diversity that unites us and strengthens us as a nation. Let's keep building together a more inclusive United States where all the voices are heard and all of the cultures are valued. Hispanic Heritage Month is a part of the beautiful weaving of this nation, and let's weave a future together that is promising. So happy Hispanic Heritage Month from CIMA.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. All right, thank you all for being with us. We really appreciate it. All right, Commissioners, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing on the FY2025 Annual Section 5311 Grant Application. William Hei will help present this item.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to provide information on the proposed FY25 Annual Section 5311 Administrative and Capital Grants applications on your agenda this evening. This required public hearing and associated resolution. Are part of our annual recurring grant application to the North Carolina Department of Transportation for state and federal grant funds. Grant funds we seek to apply support. The grant funds we seek support a portion of our annual administrative and capital costs for Buncombe County's community transportation system, Mountain Mobility. Mountain Mobility serves senior adults, persons with disabilities, clients of human service agencies, and the general public. The memorandum included in your materials summarizes the FY25 grant application. The fiscal year 25 grant application seeks over $1.6 million in federal funds, nearly $180,000 in matching state funds, and requires $222,000 in local matching funds. The application seeks $365,000 in federal and state funds to support Mountain Mobility's administration. This includes management contracts, data processing, utilities, and the lease of office space. An additional $1,400,000 in federal and state funds is being sought to support vehicle purchases, radios, and routing and scheduling software, as well as supporting devices for those, for said software. We request that the board hold a public hearing and adopt the resolution as presented.
Excellent. Commissioners, any questions? If not, let's open the public hearing at 5:51 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak during the hearing? All right, we'll close the public hearing at 5:52 PM. Is there motion?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks. Thank you so much. All right. Can the county manager's report?
Our report, sir.
We have no old business. Under new business, we have a resolution appointing Melissa Moore as Finance Director. And Sharon Burke, I think, is here to present this item.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Back on January 24, the Board of Commission directed Human Resources to begin the recruitment process for the Director of Finance. After a month of nationwide advertisements, the candidate pool was not as robust as we had hoped it would be. At that point, we agreed to seek assistance through a recruitment firm. We issued an RFP in April, and five firms submitted a proposal. Ultimately, Rapatellus was the firm that was chosen. Rapatellus began their work in late April with a nationwide advertising campaign. The search resulted in sixteen candidates, and the initial screenings were held with all qualified candidates. In July, the top four candidates met virtually with the Board of Commission and the county manager for the first round of interviews. On August 7, three semifinalists were invited to Asheville to participate in final interviews. And those interviews were with the Board of Commission, the county manager, and a meet and greet with department directors. At that time, the Board of, I'm sorry, the Board of Commission directed Human Resources to proceed with the hiring of Melissa Moore. Today, I formally request you approve Melissa Moore's hire effective Monday, September 18, 2023.
All right, thank you, Sharon. Commissioners, are there any questions?
Motion to hire Melissa Moore as Finance Director.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Are there any other questions or comments? Let's go ahead and vote, and then we'll say some things. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, and great, and Melissa's here, so we're great, so glad to see you out here now after talking to you and going through this process. So Melissa, I know, speak for the board. One must say we're all really excited that you're moving to Buncombe County to help head up our team here, and we had a, as Sharon said-
And we had a, as Sharon said, there was a really good process to do a nationwide search for a new Finance Director, and we had a great pool of really talented people from across North Carolina and across the country who applied. And, but as we looked at this pool of great applicants, the Commission was in agreement that Melissa is the person that we wanted to bring on board to help with this important role in Buncombe County. So thank you for being here, and thanks for joining the team, we really look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And if you'd like to say anything, you're welcome to do so.
My husband Carl and I are very excited to join the community, and it's a pleasure and an honor to serve, so thank you.
All right, thank you very much, we look forward to working with you. All right, congratulations, great job. All right, the next item on our agenda is an Economic Development Policy Revision, and Tim Love is here to explain this item.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This evening, here before you to present on an Economic Development Policy Revision. The last time I was here was August first at the briefing, presented some initial ideas for you to consider, and so we're back today to get your final thoughts on some of these items related to the policy. In terms of our agenda, we'll do a quick overview of the policy, we'll talk about some of the options that staff are recommending today, and then we'll talk about what the next steps would be depending on Commissioners' desire. So in terms of overview and requests, you know, the policy was last updated in two thousand and seventeen. In that policy was a wage schedule that has not been updated. However, there were significant changes made in equitable hiring. Since the change of that policy, we have had some success. There have been a number of projects announced in our community, six projects to date totaling seven hundred and fifty million in capital investment and a thousand jobs with average wages exceeding sixty thousand dollars per year. However, we see that in recent years, there's been a lot that's changed in our community. We've seen increased housing costs, inflation continues to be a barrier for many folks. And so while we've seen some wage growth, we've seen a lot of that eaten into, and so wanted to take the opportunity to talk to you today about potential changes to that policy to help fight against some of those losses in wage. So our request before the Commission today is to consider the options we presented to you for wage schedule options, to approve the recommended changes that we've attached to the agenda. If you have questions, of course, we're glad to consider those. And then ultimately, direct staff to continue the discussion on the economic development policy in a subsequent phase that, you know, takes into account additional stakeholder feedback, additional best practice research, things of that nature. So when we met last on the briefing, there were some general questions we received from the board, so wanted to take an opportunity to talk about those just briefly today with you. They're your questions, so you likely remember them, but one of the main questions were, you know, what are some of the considerations, the trade-offs, the benefits of the different wage schedules we presented? And so we've got some benefits and some trade-offs here, and, you know, the benefit clearly of an increased wage incentive schedule, it just, it's going to help generate higher wages in our community, and I think that's kind of self-explanatory. Additionally, it's an opportunity for us to realign, you know, with the labor market and the wage trends that we've seen. There was a time in our community where, you know, a twenty dollar an hour wage maybe seemed, you know, unattainable even, and we see today that that has changed substantially due to pressures in our, with our workforce, the impacts of COVID, and many other things. Additionally, it's an opportunity to encourage higher wages in a region where we typically lag behind the state. From a trade-off perspective, we want to keep the wage schedule close enough that we can keep sort of our projects and our companies at the table so that we can encourage that wage growth that we'd like to see. If our wage targets are too high, if we say the bottom rung is thirty dollars an hour, we lose the opportunity for the conversation to talk about some of the other important aspects of the policy, which include equitable hiring as an example. So those are just some examples of the trade-offs and the opportunities here. Additionally, there was some healthy discussion on living wages and the ability to create sort of a requirement for living wages, and we thought that was a really healthy discussion and want to continue talking about that today with you, and have some ideas on how we could accomplish some of that. So getting into the policy revisions, again, the primary issue here is, we're before you wanting to talk about that wage schedule. Our adoption, our recommendation is that you adopt a schedule that's indexed, updates automatically annually. It's also an opportunity for us to think about that methodology and, you know, do we want to lean towards an average wage or a median household income, things of that nature. In terms of the concept of living wages that was brought up before, we think it would be important, you know, as new projects are originated in this community, to require that those projects submit documentation of their local employees, and specifically the percentage of local employees that are at or above living wages. And so we think this is a really important data point for us because that's something that we can share as we discuss these projects with Commission that gives you a sense of how not just the project employees are incentivized or structured, the new employees, if you will, but how the full local workforce is also paid. So we think that's a really good data point. We looked, you know, at exploring, like drawing a line in the sand and saying, you know, for instance, a certain percentage of employees should be paid at or above this wage rate, and we really didn't feel like we had the right amount of data to sort of draw that line in the sand. So we feel like this is a good opportunity to bring that data to light, also use it to impact and change the policy potentially in the future as we collect that data. Getting back to our wage method alternatives, you know, we talked about this at the briefing, but we're proposing, the Commission picked from sort of these three methods. We've got our average wage method, which is what we believe is our current method. You know, that average wage today would be twenty-four dollars and twenty-five cents compared, and that's the bottom rung of the wage ladder, compared to what it is currently, which is twenty dollars and ninety-three cents, a substantial increase there. We also looked at two other methods, which are a little bit different, median household income, looking at Buncombe County as the scope, but then also looking at median household income and looking at the entire state as our scope. The difference is here, you know, we're looking at household income, but we've normalized so that we're only looking at a household with one worker in it. So that would be twenty-eight sixty for your Buncombe County median household income, and then twenty-nine oh nine for that North Carolina perspective. So those are the options in a nutshell. On our next slide, a lot of numbers here, but these are what, this is what the current schedule looks like. So in your second column, the two thousand and seventeen average wage, you can see that first range is twenty dollars and ninety-three cents, twenty-six ninety-two. You can see how that would change with each of these methodologies, but the short of it meaning all of these are moving up, they're indexed against, you know, a methodology that would update annually in the future depending on what you select. And just as a refresher for y'all, but also the public at large, you know, to the far left, there's a per-job incentive amount, and so the way this works is when a new project originates and wants to apply for economic development incentives, we go through a process to say, how many jobs are you creating and at what level of this schedule? And so for each job created, there's an opportunity for a company to, you know, have an additional incentive, it's a one-time incentive, depending on the number of jobs they're creating at these schedules. So it is a, it's a great tool for us that we do utilize and have discussions with every company about. While we were looking at the methodology on this wage schedule, we felt it important also to take a look at some of the equitable hiring practices that were implemented in two thousand and seventeen, which are great, but, you know, over the course of six years, you learn something and have an opportunity to do things potentially different and/or better. And so our current policy is on the left, and you can see kind of what that says. I won't walk you through it, I know it's a lot of text. On the right, we've got some recommended changes to bolster the program, and those are in bold. And so right off the top, we're saying that any project that wants to participate in the Economic Development Incentive Program, that is, meaning they want economic development incentives, they must participate in our Inclusive Hiring Partners Program or an equivalent workforce development program. And for those that aren't familiar with Inclusive Hiring Partners, this is a partnership with the Chamber, the EDC, but also a number of organizations in our community, including Spark and the Housing Authority and a number of others, where we work to align, or to introduce employers to folks that are trying to get employed, typically from historically disadvantaged populations, such as those living in a housing authority as an example. And so the goal is that an employer who is committed to this program commits to interviewing people that are able to make it through this Inclusive Hiring Partners Program. So it's not a guaranteed job, but it is a guaranteed interview and a guaranteed opportunity for someone to get in the door. So we think that's a requirement that folks participate in this program. In general, anybody that is coming and talking to us, we're talking about this program, and they're likely going to participate, but this just makes it a requirement to even start the discussion. Additionally, the two thousand and seventeen policy did some pretty cool things and identified a handful of populations where we wanted to offer additional incentives from historically disadvantaged populations if employers are able to make these hires. And so those examples in two thousand and seventeen were NC Works, STEP, and employees who were hired that were low-level or nonviolent offenders. And so what we've done is we've modified some of this language, and so we kept NC Works, we kept STEP, we added work first. We also call out the Inclusive Hiring Partners Program here again. We altered our languages, or excuse me, our languages, we altered our language to talk about justice-involved individuals as opposed to the previous language, which was not as inclusive. But then we also opened the door to employers who have specific wraparound programs to support their workforce. And a big part of what we learned through this process is that some people have it figured out better than we do. And so those employers that are equity-forward in their hiring practices, have case management or caseworkers like with, that are helping folks with their employment, those folks should be able to get credit for what they're doing as well. Finally, we increased the minimum job incentive to a value of at least one thousand dollars per employee. Previously, it was five hundred dollars, and so we just up the floor.
Yes, please. Verification on that, Tim. So, but on the, on the previous slide, the first per-job incentive payment's five hundred dollars. So is that still the case, or is it a thousand, or five hundred?
We're not recommending a change to that initial rung on the ladder.
Yep.
But we are recommending an increase on the equitable hiring side.
So if you, if you actually, you do the interviews, and if you actually make a hire, then it's a thousand, or is it an additional thousand? I guess I'm just a little unclear on that piece.
Yep, we, historically, we haven't sort of double-counted, so it would be you're eligible for one, and the process is a little more complicated because we sort of track this on the front end, and so we make a commitment with the company that's in a contract, and you've seen some of those come before this board. And then we track it over the course of the contract and do kind of a pay-for-performance deal at the end. So you have to prove the hire and prove that the hire was around for a certain period of time. It's not just a front-end payment.
Okay, I just want to make sure I've got it there. So, so the thousand-dollar, the minimum job incentive value of one thousand dollars is per employee who actually gets hired from that program? So through one of these kind of targeted groups, if you actually make the hire, not just do the interview, but make a hire, then it's a minimum thousand?
Right.
Okay, that's, thank you.
All right, so I'm glad to jump into next steps. If y'all have questions, by all means. So, you know, next steps, you know, we were at the briefing on August first, today we're before you at the regular meeting. Our Phase Two would be to continue kind of evaluating, you know, we've got some other ideas we'd like to bring before you, but we want to sort of socialize those more with, you know, our employers, but also, you know, our workforce development folks, and to see what we can bring back in terms of additional policy recommendations. So those are our next steps. Our request before you, you know, is to, you know, consider the policy schedules or the wage schedules we put before you. If you feel comfortable selecting one, we'd like to hear that. And then we'd like for you to approve the recommended changes to the policy. The way that you would do that would be through the approval of the resolution, which was also attached to the meeting agenda today. And then finally, you know, we've alluded to evolving this policy, we, you know, if you'd like us to continue looking at that, you go ahead and tell me now, and we'll continue doing it, but we assumed that you would, so.
Okay, great, great job, Tim. All right, Commissioners, any questions, or should we just start looking at the wage, the wage schedule options, but any, any questions outside of that? Or if not, we can start kind of focusing on that piece? So this is going back to, Tim, is this right? This is going back to the, I'm not sure what page, it is page, page seven on the slide?
That's correct, page seven, if we could bring that up.
Yep, we could bring page seven back up.
And one question while we're looking at this. So the minimum wage, our living wage, was discussed last time, is that included in any of this policy change, or is that something that you're wanting to continue looking at?
So our, our recommendation at this time on that would be to amend the policy, and you'll see that reflected in the policy, that living wages are strongly encouraged by the board, and that we collect that with any new project that comes in the door. So we collect the data, that way we can see kind of, you know, what, what's actually occurring with these projects in the community. I think in a Phase Two, come back with potentially a more firmer line in the sand, but that's our recommendation. Collect data, change in the future.
Okay. And, and Tim, kind of related to that, so if a company comes in and, say it's going to create a hundred jobs, and, you know, seventy-five percent of them score really well on this, whichever of these wage schedules we select here, but twenty-five percent of them are below that. So we can, we can still consider that project under our policy, even though twenty-five percent of them are lower-paying jobs, maybe not even living wage jobs, we'll look at that. So basically, companies can get credit for all the jobs that score above this amount, regardless of what percentage of the jobs that is, that are being created.
That is correct, and of course, assuming that that project was approved through a public hearing and all of that, but that's, you're correct.
Okay. Well, I would say in terms of kind of continued evaluation, to me, that, that is maybe like the most, I like this, I'm looking forward to getting this in place, that does seem like the most important part that, that I think warrants further discussion, right? Because, yeah, any job in this range is great, but if it's an economic, I mean, we have the lowest unemployment rate in the state, right? Anybody can go get a, you know, most anybody can go get a job right now, question is, is can you find a good job, right? So just creating a bunch of fairly low-paying jobs, actually, honestly, it's just really not that helpful to our economy, and in some ways, kind of creates issues because people are already trying to, like, we have a shortage of workers, really. So, so we really want to support projects where definitely all the jobs are a living wage, hopefully, most of them, or all of them are scoring in these good-paying job categories, you know. So anyway, but we'll take this step, and then we'll come, it sounds like we'll come back to that.
I have, Tim, I have a question.
Please.
Maybe I missed it, but are we considering, you know, you mentioned twenty-five percent the floor if it's below, you know, a living wage, but where do we stop giving in incentive? Give you a good example, if a company comes in and fifty percent of the jobs are below a living wage, I don't think we should give them incentive, because you're talking about people who are going to be struggling to live in Buncombe County. And I think that's part of the incentive, is for us to up our game, so to speak, to make sure that we have the companies coming in who will make it so that everybody can afford to live, you know, in Buncombe. Because now with some of the companies, you know, we see people moving to Henderson, the other counties, because they can't afford a house in Buncombe. But I hope that we'll use our incentive to help that, because let's face it, from a selfish point of view, when they move to other counties, that's taxes we lose.
The point is absolutely well-taken, and I think a big point of why we want to collect that data, because we feel like that should be a part of the decision-making, and, you know, candidates And, you know, candidly, I will say many of the projects we bring before you, that, that isn't the case, but we still want to collect that data, so.
I just want to second what Commissioner Whiteside said. When I think about, I've been looking at the, the county health data report, national report, and it talks about how some of the greatest health improvements are made from increasing the income at those lower levels. And so when I think about that, that's what's going to have that greatest impact. And so I do, I really want to echo what Commissioner Whiteside said there.
Okay. And Tim, in terms of the different wage schedule options, do the staff, the staff don't have a specific recommendation on which of these to go with, right? The trade-off is, hey, we'd love to raise the bar, but if you raise it enough, you start, you know, it starts not being applicable to more projects. That's, that's the basic trade-off we're looking at here. So, so there's just sort of like, you know, which of those do you want to kind of focus on? And, but it could be, if I'm correct, there's, there's three options. There's the 2022 average wage, the area median income category, or the area median income for the state of North Carolina. So any of those three, basically, we need to suggest one of those.
That's right. And just to add some commentary, maybe muddle the situation. You know, wages versus income, you know, we, we know that wages are kind of, you know, what you're paid when you go and have a job, right? That's what you get for your services, your hours, whatever it is. Income obviously includes other variables. Not everyone is going to have additional income, but some folks might from, you know, any number of sources. So that, that's something for you to consider. You know, additionally, you know, our strategic plan, Buncombe 2025, our goal is catching up with area median income at the state level. And so if you want to be, you know, aspirational in approaching that, I think that's fair game. It is a goal we've set in the plan. I think either of these is going to move the needle for us, and we're still going to work as staff to try to make the best, bring the best projects forward and kind of encourage the best wages possible up and down the line, so.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to throw something out there to get started. Because you mentioned earlier that if we, we got too, too high with the starting point, that that could have a, kind of a negative impact with what we're hoping to achieve. So when I look at the 2022 average, there's a range there that it gives us. So I would be willing to consider that with the thought that I do think it's really important to look at that living wage and having some really strong goals with that. So putting that, marrying those two together is, is kind of where I am.
So I'm falling on the area median income for Buncombe County, and my rationale for that is based on the work that we're doing on the Affordable Housing Committee, because we're looking at AMI when we're looking at rent affordability and homeownership goals, and this feel like, feels like that aligns a bit better with where we're headed in that particular arena within the county.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'm kind of, I'm kind of on the fence, honestly, so, Martin, any thoughts?
I'm leaning toward the same, just looking at housing being the single biggest expenditure for most of the professionals looking for work here, and the justice-involved folks in particular. It's, I, I think looking at our numbers specific to Buncombe County, the AMI for that is probably the, the best metric that I am leaning toward, but I'm open to other commissioners' thoughts.
Parker? Yeah. Okay. I, 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 I can go with that, too. You know, if we, if we, as we think about continuing to iterate this, I mean, if we did have policies around, just making stuff up, but, you know, kind of examples, but if we said, hey, you know, if you, here's the schedule, but also if 100% of your employees are paid a living wage, you know, you get this boost, right? So we, we sort of incentivize all these good-paying jobs, but also if you commit to living wage for all your employees, which tons of our business community does that, right? So, so here's the additional bump you get if you are a certified living wage employee, or if you say, or other kinds of equivalent things, where all the workforce is being, I mean, hopefully, I mean, and then living wage is kind of a floor, right? So, so if you, if you meet these criteria, but these, that 100% of your employees fit on this wage schedule, that would also be great, right? Because I don't, I don't, it doesn't really, I, I don't have much concern about supporting these particular incentives, but again, if a company comes in and a lot of the jobs they create don't pay that well, then I'm a lot less excited about providing any incentive for that smaller number of jobs they do create. So, so I guess this is just to say, I'll support the area median income approach, too, if we develop some more policies that incentivize strong across-the-board support for employees at a company. I would be open to actually maybe relaxing it a little bit, because we know that the companies we're supporting really are supporting all their workers in a really strong way, but since we don't have that piece in there yet, I want to make sure the part we are incentivizing, we're keeping the bar pretty, pretty high on it. So I'll, I'll come down on that spot. Any other thoughts or comments on the wage schedule? Just to your point, Brownie, I was curious. Do you, do you feel like that's something that you could accomplish? Could we continue to brainstorm that, to what Brownie's asking?
I definitely think we can bring some options forward. I, I would like to do that as part of kind of that Phase 2 discussion, if that's agreeable to commission, but there's no doubt that we, we've got some ideas and other ideas that we've been contemplating, you know, or, you know, commitment to a dynamic living wage, you know?
Mm-hmm.
You know, today is a lot different than tomorrow.
It would need to be, for sure.
So those are the types of things we'd love to bring forward, and we just need to spend some time on it.
Okay. All right.
You know, I'd like to add here, Brownie, before we stop, you know, I've been on the EDC committee since, well, seven, what? No, since 17. But I'd like, this is a good time to commend our staff, because they have really, because of the work of our staff, everything has changed in Buncombe County. I've seen a big change, because almost at first, when I was on the committee, I was surprised, because some of the companies, if you could chew gum and walk, they were getting incentive. But now it's not that way. It's really helping the county. But I want to commend you, keep up the good work, and that really is helping overall, all the other members of the EDC committee. I've seen every lot change as a result of the work that we've done. So keep up the good work, yeah.
Great. Well said. Okay. So the second piece is we need to approve the recommended changes to the overall policy.
Correct.
Right? So is there a motion to approve the recommended changes to the economic development policy, and that is inclusive of including the area median income for Buncombe County category as the wage schedule option that we'll have in place?
So moved.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And is there a motion to direct staff to continue to assess the policy for additional changes for Phase 2 to meet strategic plan goals?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Tim, appreciate it. Thank y'all very much. All right. Approval or consideration of approval of bond funding and COVID recovery funding reallocation? And Tyler Henry from Strategic Partnerships is here to help us out with this.
Evening, commissioners. I'm just going to provide a quick update on a specific project with COVID recovery funding and how that also involves the general obligation bond funds. So in November of 2021, Buncombe County awarded Mountain Housing Opportunities Incorporated just over 2.5 million in COVID recovery funding to support the Recovery Starts at Home project, which is to develop a new affordable housing for rent at the project known as Lake Shore Villas in Arden. In May of 2022, the project was awarded an additional amount of $718,616 in COVID recovery funding. MHO has not signed the agreement to accept the additional $718,000 due to concerns with a certain clawback provision included in the county's contract and has since rescinded these funds. Staff brought MHO's updated financials for Lake Shore Villas to the Affordable Housing Subcommittee at its September 5th meeting to consider options. The subcommittee recommended that the board replace the rescinded COVID recovery funding with general obligation bond funds in the amount of $718,616. Buncombe County has also awarded this project bond funds previously in the amount of 2.6 million. So replacing the rescinded funds with bond funds would result in a total bond allocation of $3,318,616. So staff is recommending allocating the rescinded COVID recovery funds to the ferry road infrastructure project. To date, this project has been awarded just over 4.26 million. The project is in need of additional funding to support the creation of an access road to affordable housing on a county-owned property in South Asheville. With the additional $718,000, the total award to this project would be $4,983,332. Before you, we are, staff is requesting that the commissioners consider approval of changes to COVID recovery funding award as listed, reducing the Recovery Starts at Home project by the $718,616 and increasing ferry road infrastructure project by that same amount. Secondly, we are asking that you consider a budget amendment of the Affordable Housing General Obligation Bond to increase the Lake Shore Villas commitment by $718,616.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Or is there a motion? I guess we'd need two motions on this. So is there a motion to consider the changes to the COVID recovery funding awards of reducing the Recovery Starts at Home by 718,616 and increasing ferry road infrastructure by 718,616?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And is there a budget amendment to support the Affordable Housing General Obligation Bond investment to increase funding for Lake Shore Villas by 718,616?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks. All right, commissioners, that's all of our new business. Do we have any board appointments? Okay. We don't? Okay, great. All right. Reports from boards and commissions. Are there any items to, commissioners want to give updates on?
I'll mention real quick that the School Capital Commission, we are looking at projects, the both school systems have brought those capital projects to us, and then we should be making some decisions, more than likely, at our next meeting in October. And then it will come to the full commission.
All right. Great.
I would like to give an update after yesterday's sports commission meeting. There's a lot of information swirling that is not the, the complete story of how we got to where we were yesterday. So I do want to update that situation. As you all know, the Buncombe County was one of four founding members of the Sports Commission 13 years ago. The way that organization has been structured is that the four founding members truly are the board members, and the rest of the board members are essentially advisory board members. There's a lot of challenges with that. It is not a traditional nonprofit board structure, and it has left a lot of decision-making in the power, or in the hands of four, four members. The Sports Commission was essentially organized as a way to bring visitors into Buncombe County through January, February, and March, when traditionally our tourism numbers were very, very low. So it was brought into the county to increase tourism. So these two things really do go together. And because of the structure of the founding members, in June of 2022, the founding members met, met with the board chair and the interim executive director of the Sports Commission to talk about what a sustainable model moving forward would look like. We agreed that we would assess the current structure and the bylaws of the organization. We would analyze the current funding model, as well as optimizing board and staff and identifying critical relationships, so the Sports Commission can continue to be successful. The chair, Mr. Zubrad, and now interim executive director, Chris Smith, were present at that meeting and agreed to the assessment. They agreed to allowing Explore Asheville to fund the assessment, because the Sports Commission budget could not handle the cost. Everyone was on board with that. At that time, Chris Smith, who is still the interim executive director, agreed to provide options for consultants to put out RFPs to. He did that work, the RFP went out, two RFPs came back. They were from sports tourism consultants, because as I said, the Sports Commission is sports tourism. So they were sports tourism consultants. The four founding members participated in the interview process, along with the board chair and Chris Smith. Ultimately, we chose to select the Huddle Up group at the request of the board chair and Chris Smith. That was their preference. We agreed to it, because they were going to be the ones that had to work very closely with John and the Huddle Up group. I want to say, again, this was not an effort for Explore Asheville to grab power from the Sports Commission of Asheville and Buncombe County, as has been reported. It truly was to look at the structure and the sustainability of the Sports Commission moving forward. When the Sports Commission was created, three of the four funding partners were equal funding partners at $45,000 a year. Buncombe County and the city of Asheville have remained $45,000 supporters of the Sports Commission. UNC Asheville was an in-kind facility sponsor for the organization. Explore Asheville has increased their funding from $45,000 to $230,000 a year on a $340,000 annual budget. For those of us who work in the nonprofit arena, we know best practice is that no more than 20% of your budget should come from one single funder. All right. So we got through the consulting process. They were here in April. They prevent, presented their findings and their recommendations. From the beginning, they made it very clear that they are usually traditionally supporters of standalone, independent sports commissions. However, based on their work, their research, they spent a number of hours interviewing some of you, as well as others across Buncombe County, they determined that that was not in the best interest of the Sports Commission to maintain long-term viability and sustainability. Ultimately, this decision did have to come back to the founding members. We put a pause button on it. There was a lot of consternation and questions, as I've previously reported after that meeting, and additional listening sessions were scheduled, took a lot of input, so much so that we then agreed to create a task force who would delve in deeper to looking at the recommendations as to whether or not the Sports Commission should maintain its independence or move to a blended model, which is what the Durham Sports Commission currently looks like. So that was one model that was looked at. I do want to thank Tim Love from Buncombe County, who serves as an ex officio of the Sports Commission Board, who did step up to serve. They determined that that was not in the best interest of the sports commission to maintain long-term viability and sustainability. Ultimately, this decision did have to come back to the founding members. We put a pause button on it. There was a lot of consternation and questions, as I've previously reported after that meeting, and additional listening sessions were scheduled, took a lot of input, so much so, that we then agreed to create a task force who would delve in deeper to looking at the recommendations as to whether or not the sports commission should maintain its independence or move to a blended model, which is what the Durham Sports Commission currently looks like. So that was one model that was looked at. I do want to thank Tim Love from Buncombe County, who serves as an ex officio of the sports commission board, who did step up to serve as the Buncombe County representative on the task force. So thank you, Tim. He spent an exorbitant amount of time and hours with this task force. And it took, by allowing Tim to serve in this role, it really did take a lot of the politics out of this kind of decision, because truly, political decisions should not be made in this arena, at least from where I sit. That's what I believe. At yesterday's sports commission board meeting, as has been reported, the two, two models were brought forward, much discussion. 10 voting members did choose to abstain from voting to maintain independence or moving to a blended model. Full disclosure, as a founding member and a founding vote, next week, I did choose to abstain, as did all founding members. So the current advisory board did vote to maintain independence and not move under a blended model under Explore Asheville. This will then come under advisory next week to the founding members, and we will make some decisions from there. I'm happy to answer questions, but I really did feel like we needed a little bit of a historical perspective on how we got here and information that has not been brought forward through various channels over the last couple of days. Thanks.
All right. Any questions for now? Okay. Any other updates? All right. On October 3rd at 3:00 PM, the county commissioners will hold a briefing meeting at 300, at 200 College Street, room 326 in downtown Asheville. On October 3rd at 5:00 PM, the county commissioners will hold their regular meeting at 200 College Street, room 326 in downtown Asheville. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.